Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, August 20th City Council Meeting. Uh, please, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Shaffer.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Mayor Chapman.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing. Uh, at this time, I'd like to call the public hearing to order at approximately 7:02 PM regarding, uh, DR Horton's request to amend the annexation agreement relative to the Oaks of Irish Prairie. Uh, at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment on behalf of the public hearing? Sir?
My name should be under.
This is for the rec center.
Oh, for rec center?
Yes. Yeah, so that's, you're, you're, you're coming up. This is for the public hearing.
Okay.
So, here for the rec center. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll go ahead and invite, uh, DR Horton's group up, uh, to give a presentation and, uh, explain who they are and what they plan to do.
I'll get it to you. Uh, good evening. Uh, for clarity's sake, uh, my name's Dean Edmire. Uh, I'm the local development agent for Avanti Properties Group, the actual developer. Uh, as outlined in the cover letter with the application, we are the actual applicant, uh, in connection with DR Horton, who is the proposed builder for the site. Since the crux of, uh, tonight's discussion is going to be about the plans that DR Horton proposes to bring to the site and, and other site-related matters, I'll simply, uh, by way of introduction, state that Avanti Properties, uh, entered into an agreement with DR Horton. Uh, we're fully supportive of their application and, uh, believe that, uh, working through these issues with the, uh, council tonight, uh, you know, will give us a little better idea of what we can and cannot do going forward. Uh, and therefore, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Derek Hoffman from DR Horton, and he'll, uh, move you through this slide presentation here shortly.
Good evening. Um, as Dean said, my name is Derek Hoffman, and I work with, uh, DR Horton. I'm in land acquisitions with DR Horton. Uh, in the interest of, uh, full disclosure, uh, my 12-year-old son decided to wake up the entire house at 3:45 this morning because he was so excited about his first day at school. And, uh, my, my wife volunteered me to, uh, deal with that situation. And so I didn't get a whole lot of sleep last night. So if I'm, if I'm up here looking a little glassy-eyed or yawning a little bit, uh, that's why I'm, I'm kinda running out of steam at seven o'clock tonight. So, my apologies for that. Um, so first off, I just want to start by saying we're very excited to be here in front of you tonight and having this conversation. Uh, some of you may have been around back in 2013 when we initially tried to acquire this site, and for some of the same reasons we're dealing with now, the acquisition didn't work out in 2013, and we're back again, uh, giving it a shot. And the reason we're back here is because we're big fans of McHenry, and we love rebuilding homes, new homes in our community. Um, so let's kinda just dive into this presentation. Um, by way of background, I get this to work. So who's DR, DR Horton, if you're not familiar with us? Uh, so DR Horton, uh, is the largest home builder in the United States, and we have been for the last 16 years, uh, consecutively. Um, we have operations in 80 markets in 26 states around the United States, and, uh, we've closed over 50,000 homes, uh, for the period ending, uh, June 30th, 2018. That's for a year. So we build a lot of different products in a lot of different places. Uh, we build age-targeted, age-restricted products. We build townhomes. We build single-family homes, which is the subject of what we're talking about here tonight. Uh, in the Chicagoland market specifically, uh, we currently have 40 different active communities that we're selling homes in right now. So we're hoping that Oaks of Irish Prairie will be our 41st. So, uh, as part of our contract with Avanti, we have 86 finished, single-family lots in our contract. Uh, they're highlighted in yellow on this map. Uh, per staff's request, on August 13th, uh, we had a meeting with the residents, uh, in this room, in fact, uh, at, uh, the residence of Oaks of Irish Prairie. Uh, that conversation revolved around two primary subjects. One, what we're proposing to build in their community, and number two, um, our plans for what was, uh, planned to be the clubhouse, or community center for the project. And then I think, as most of you saw in the application, we're also asking for relief on impact fees as part of, uh, our request. So, first of all, what are we planning on building, uh, at Oaks of Irish Prairie? Uh, we've submitted, uh, six plans to the village, and I just would like to highlight that. We've already set building plans into, uh, your staff. They're reviewing them for code, uh, requirements right now. And the reason that we came in early, prior to our meeting with you, is we're hoping to hit the ground running at this building season. I think, as most of you know, here in the next, uh, couple of weeks, the weather's gonna start to turn. It's gonna start to rain. It's gonna start to get cold. And none of those are great conditions for building homes. So, hoping that we can move through some of the issues that we have to deal with tonight. We submitted plans, paid our fees, began reviewing plans with staff, hoping that, once we move through these issues, we can move right into, uh, constructing homes. So we're proposing building six different, uh, uh, plans at Oaks of Irish Prairie. They range in square footage from 1,825 feet up to a little over 3,100 square feet. Uh, one ranch plan, the rest are two-story plans. Uh, there are four different elevations per plan, so a total of 24 sort of unique elevations, uh, throughout the community. And that could vary as we add brick accents, uh, stone accents, uh, to increase variety and make sure that we keep the monotony, um, uh, where it needs to be in terms of making sure that we're building unique plans throughout, uh, throughout these lots. I did wanna make a note, and I have it highlighted here, the living square footage doesn't include the basement or the garage area, so that is true kind of air-conditioned living space. So when you're looking at those square footages, I wanna make sure that you take that into account. I do get some questions. Sometimes people have concerns whether or not we're building with basements. Just wanna put that issue to rest. All these homes will have basements on them. Um, and to the extent that we don't have brick highlighted, we're planning on putting, uh, point four-inch vinyl siding, uh, on, uh, the sides of the homes as the primary siding materials. So we've, we showed a bunch of different plans, uh, in your supplemental. I don't wanna bore you by going through every elevation. That in itself could get a bit monotonous, kinda flipping through elevation after elevation. Um, but what I did do is take a sampling. And, uh, this slide is important for, uh, a couple of reasons. One, the architectural guidelines, as they currently, it says for Oaks of Irish Prairie in the annexation agreement, have a minimum projection of the garage from the front elevation of the home of, a maximum, uh, projection from the front of the home of eight feet. Uh, two of the six plans have projections of the garage that extend up 15 feet. So, part of the reason that we're having this conversation about the architecture is to make sure that we have your approval, uh, to modify the architectural guidelines for the community to allow for that additional projection. So this is, um, these homes that we typically build in our, uh, single-family, um, communities. Uh, these are really designed to be family homes, as you saw on the previous slide, and I'll just scroll back. Most of these homes are anywhere between three to five bedrooms, two-and-a-half bath homes. Um, we've built these plans for a number of years. We've really worked to tailor the interiors of them to make sure that they work with, uh, today's family lifestyles, and making sure that we have open floor plans on the first floor, making sure that we've got, uh, functionality in the second floor and the living space. A number of the, uh, homes have, uh, second floor laundry, which we find to be high in demand. Um, so these are truly meant to be homes for families to live in and occupy. The second, uh, conversation that we had with the residents was related to the clubhouse site. And, uh, we heard a couple things from the residents. First, I, I don't, I did not hear anyone at that meeting, and I know Ross was in attendance in that meeting, um, that evening, uh, voiced an opinion that they wanted a clubhouse to be built. I think at this juncture, they feel that the HOA fees that they're paying right now to the association, uh, are fairly high, uh, in their opinion. Adding the burden of a clubhouse into that HOA mix, uh, there were a lot of concerns about, uh, what that may do to their, uh, to their HOA fees. Uh, we showed two site plans, and I'm gonna show you one tonight. We showed two site plans to the residents. As one had a sort of recreation area with a splash pad and more of a player area for, uh, the kids in the neighborhood and the, and the kids that we hope to bring to that neighborhood. And I think it was pretty clear that we heard from the residents, they had no interest in a splash pad being built there. Again, it all revolved around, not that the concept wasn't nice, and not that they didn't like it. It all revolved around, uh, making sure that there was as minimal of incremental impact on the HOA as possible. So the plan that we sort of circled around, or spent most of the evening talking about, is highlighted on this exhibit. It's also in your packet as well. So what does this plan show? Uh, this plan shows, uh, three play areas for the children. Uh, underneath the trees, I know it's hard to see the detail with some of the canopy coverage, but three play areas for the kids with a swing set and a bag, a canopy pavilion area that would include sitting areas, park benches, and then a parking lot. So some of the, uh, feedback that we got from the residents was, one, they were generally supportive of this plan. Uh, secondly, they had a desire for some additional open space. As you can see with the way this landscape detail is working on this plan, there isn't a whole lot of area for kids to get out if they wanna throw around a football or throw around a frisbee. There's just not much open space. So there was, um, some, uh, I would say considerable comment about, um, the desire to see more open space. Uh, another comment that came out of our meeting was to eliminate the parking lot in favor of basketball courts or some sort of other recreation area. Uh, the residents didn't feel that the, uh, parking lot was necessary, and they would rather see that turned into some sort of recreational use versus a parking lot. A number of the residents, uh, that were at the meeting, too, expressed a desire for, uh, to ensure that there was lighting throughout the park site. They wanted to make sure, both for security reasons, uh, that there was lighting on site, they also wanted to make sure that it was on some sort of active timer system, so the lights weren't on all night, that provided with some sort of lighting nuance, uh, for the people who lived, uh, adjacent to the park. So what we're asking for, what Avanti is asking for as part of this amendment, is that we take that feedback and work with staff to refine this site plan, uh, incorporate, uh, public comment into it, um, and evolve it to meet the needs of the residents. Now, I think this is an important point. What we've asked Avanti to do in our contract to purchase these lots is we don't, it's really important for us as a home builder that these improvements not wait, that this park doesn't get built when we're halfway through the project. Does, you know, it doesn't help me if this park is sort of on the come, so to speak. So, part of our agreement with Avanti is that, as soon as we close on the site, they begin improvements on this park site immediately. In addition to that, I think if some of you have driven around that neighborhood, there's still some surface course that needs to go on the streets. There's some R&amp;R related to the, uh, to the sidewalks. There's some common area sidewalks that still need to be put in place. Again, part of our agreement with Avanti is that they take on that work immediately upon us closing. Once again, we don't wanna waste, you know, a year from now for that work to be completed. So, once again, the timing is a little bit of an issue here because of the seasonality. Asphalt plants will be closing in a couple months. We wanna make sure that we have time to be able to get that work done. So then it comes to the last point, which is the, uh, request for an impact fee modification. So, I'm sure many of you, when you saw this, you asked, well, why is, is DR Horton, uh, asking, why is Avanti asking for us to modify our impact fees, and why should we do it? Uh, the simple answer is that, based upon the market values of homes today in McHenry, it's very difficult for us to be able to build a new, single-family home, pay the current impact fees as they're structured. And we are a public company. We are a for-profit company. To make the margins necessary to make the investment that's required in this neighborhood. So why is that? Why is it so hard to do that? I'm sure many of you are thinking that, you know, as an industry, um, we are dealing with some major pressures on our side. A lot of it generates out of this tariff issue. Uh, price increases on lumber, prices increased, uh, price increases on steel, price increases on copper. And in fact, those price increases have been so dramatic on our point, we can't push them through to our homebuyers. It's impossible. Uh, because our homebuyers are dealing with issues themselves. Uh, they're dealing with a slow wage growth. Uh, they're dealing with rising interest rates, which I think, you know, has been a popular subject in the press lately. They're dealing with property taxes. And, you know, it's important to remember that, when we sell a home, that's just the beginning of the process. The, for the majority of our buyers, they still need to get a mortgage to be able to buy that home. And going through that mortgage underwriting process is, it's just as difficult as getting someone to sign on a dotted line saying they wanna buy a home. Those homes need to appraise. So appraisers, mortgage companies are gonna be looking at market values in that community and making sure that that homebuyer is buying a mark, is buying a home at market value. They're gonna be looking at income and percentages of, of income going to, uh, pay for real estate taxes, insurance, the mortgage payments. So, simply just saying, well, DR Horton's got a cost increase, pass it on to your client. I wish it was that simple. It was pre-recession. It's just not anymore. But McHenry is not unique in this regard, and I don't want anyone to come away from this meeting thinking that this is uniquely a McHenry issue, because it's not. And a lot of municipalities faced some of the same challenges that McHenry faced coming out of the recession. There were a lot of municipalities around the Chicagoland that had, um, a plethora of vacant building lots, uh, pre, uh, post-alter. And some of those municipalities tackled the issue in different ways. A lot of them were very proactive in making sure that they were taking down their impact fees, reducing their impact fees, scaling back their impact fees to make sure that development of those lots occurred. And I think that's, if you were to look around the Chicago area right now and look at where development is happening, where new homes are being built, in many cases, it's the municipalities that sort of took preemptive action, uh, on their fee schedules to make sure that homebuilders came into their communities and built homes. You know, this isn't, I, and I wanna be clear about this. I bought, on behalf of DR Horton, I bought thousands and thousands of building lots in my time with DR Horton. This is the first time that I've stood in front of a group like this, asking you guys to cut your impact fees. Part of that is because, most of the time, it was done for me in advance. The municipalities took independent action because they knew they had to in order to do it. Another case is the economics is balanced. It's not a conversation we like to have if we absolutely don't have to. Um, so this isn't just a check-the-box-before-you-buy-the-lots, go and make sure you ask them to cut their impact fees. That's not the case at all. In fact, we bought lots, uh, in two other communities, two other communities from Avanti. In both of those communities, one, uh, of the communities, uh, they had already cut their impact fees before we went under contract with Avanti. In the other community, uh, we were able to, to make it work without asking that municipality to cut their impact fees. So, I, I wanna be clear that, you know, we're not, I understand this is a sensitive issue for you all. I understand it's a difficult decision for all of you to make as well. Uh, but I want you to understand, too, that we're willing to make a commitment here in McHenry. As I told the homeowners, uh, the other night, our contract is, uh, written in a way that we're gonna be buying all 86 of these lots at once. So this isn't a dip your toe in the water, see if the market's okay, and if it's not, then get out of town and leave. We're buying all 86 lots. We're committing to stay here, uh, until this is done. One of the comments that came up from one of the homeowners the other night was, "Well, you know what? We heard that before. When I bought my home here, that builder said that they were gonna be here until the end as well." Well, I'm very proud to say that DR Horton was in the Chicago market before the recession. We continued to build in the Chicago market through the recession, and we're here afterwards. We committed to Chicago. We're staying in Chicago, and, uh, we're committed to stay with this project until it's, it's completed. Uh, by the time that we build our 86th home at the site, we will have invested approximately $20 million into the site. And that includes the impact fees as they are proposed in the amendment. So we're also willing to put our money where our mouth is on this and invest considerable money, money into not only this community, but also into the city of McHenry. You know, from my perspective, this is a joint effort on both of our beheads. Um, it's been 11 years. It's been 11, it's been 11 long years since a home was built up at Oaks of Irish Prairie. I feel like the residents have probably waited a very long time to kinda see this thing come to conclusion and for it to be finished up. We have a lot of the pieces and puzzle in place right now. We've got a cooperative landowner and developer who's willing to invest money to finish the park, to finish the streets, and to complete those improvements. You have a financially strong homebuilder who's willing to come in to buy out the rest of the project and make sure that it gets built out and committing to it building out. And I hope the city council is, is committed to seeing this through as well. So with that said, that concludes my presentation. I'm sure you have questions for me about all of the things that we talked about, and I'd be happy to address any, any thoughts, comments, questions you may have.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go, go ahead and open it up for, uh, any questions by council. I'll move on.
Yeah, I just wanna mention the fact that, uh, if you look at the minutes of, uh, the original annexation, uh, there was a vote for no. Uh, basically, I did not like Veterans Parkway the way it was designed as far as only one way, one road, or one lane in each direction. Uh, was not happy with some of the type of construction as part of the flooring trusses that Town Country built. And again, it was my own personal feeling on that. Uh, but one of the big, major things was the community center. We just got rid of the community center in Whispering Oaks over in McHenry, and it, been here since 1970. And, uh, since I've been an Alderman, I had a lot of constituents complain about it. Uh, but then again, we had some constituents that wanted it. Uh, there was a vast majority that wanted to get rid of it and everything else. Um, have, has anybody talked to all the residents? Are all the residents in harmony, or are we talking just the homeowners associations? Have we, could we say that we're gonna get us, you know, all the people that live out there signing off on this? I mean...
Well, we, uh, Avanti sent notices, or perhaps you might wanna look up-
Yeah, I'll just follow.
To, uh, address that for the residents' meeting that was referenced, uh, it, it wasn't a notice just to the, like, an H-way board or, or select group went to everybody. Um, we also made them aware that there was, uh, public comment available at this meeting tonight and potentially going forward. Um, you know, as to, uh, um, do you get your head count, a percentage? I'm not prepared to do that right on, you know, on my feed here, but, uh, in terms of-
The appearance, though, is, is that there really isn't any outcry that anybody wants to keep?
Not that we heard. We, I asked, uh, my, again, uh, my job as a development manager, um, a company like Avanti hires me to finish the streets and deal with the homeowners association and, and get the thing across the finish line. Um, anecdotally, no, I've not heard that, any support for it. Um, at last week's meeting, obviously, we didn't hear of the roughly, what, 50, 45 or 50-some people? We did not hear any support for it. And I think what it, what it really comes from, it's a math problem. Remember when that community center was first laid out, and the site was first laid out, it was four units, uh, two units north of Veterans, two units south. Um, right now, you're looking at, in theory, you know, my, my client purchased essentially what's on the south side. Somebody else owns what's on the north side, and frankly, I don't know whether that'll ever develop, uh, or what it will develop as. So, when you say, "Hey, folks, we're gonna build the same amenity," and, you know, less than half of you were willing to support it than originally planned, I think that's also, uh, probably what was behind some of their, their rationales.
Do you know, uh, are there covenants or restrictions as far as on the properties for the community center that, uh, has any kind of, uh, language as far as, uh, if they wanted to get rid of it, uh, you know, a majority or voter?
No, not, not, not that I saw, no. But the reference, um, and I, and I have to, don't check, but I think, uh, in a short time, when I've been around, the only reference I saw of the community center itself was the phrase in the annexation agreement.
Unfortunately, sometimes, you know, you'll do your, your due diligence as much as you can to get the residents, uh, notified and, and everything else. And then after it happens, you know, then you get some people that are upset about it. I, again, you know, we represent the, the residents of the, of the city, and that includes the residents there. I just wanna be sure that the, the vast majority are in harmony with that. And again, because of that home, uh, community center, I was on board, again, for 10 years, five years, the last five as the president, and I know what, what the budgets are, and I can see where the HOA feels as far as costs, because, uh, that was years back, and I can imagine what it would be now, you know, as far as maintaining it. And I applaud them, the fact that, uh, they're looking at it responsibly and everything else, basically responsible for their residents that they represent.
Yeah, it's, it's understandable, and, um, I, I, I get that. I will say, uh, I have a number of communities and a number of clients, uh, similar to Avanti, and this is, uh, um, not the first time we've gone through this to where folks are saying, "Hey, it's a different world." You know, 25, 30% of the original planned lots are all that are ever gonna be on, on the ground, you know? Are, are us 30% gonna carry the bill for the whole thing, so...
Now, we're talking about taking this from a community center to a park. Uh, is that a private park?
It, it is, uh, per the final plat, yes. It would be owned by the homeowners association.
So it's not-
Currently, 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 to be clear, sort of, um, since it has not been developed, um, it is owned by the developer. Uh, the developer would, whatever's agreed upon with, uh, DR Horton and the city, the developer would have me finish it, improve it, and once it's accepted and built, it's deeded over to the homeowners association as a completed park.
Okay. Well, you're the developer, so you're the one that actually does all that.
Yep.
I mean, they're the, they are just buying the lots.
Yes, sir.
So they're not responsible for the infrastructure or anything else.
Right.
Uh, which does bring up another point, and it's the fact that, uh, the annexation agreement is for the entire parcel, and I understand you're only looking at selling the, um, developed lots at this time. What's your plans for the rest of that, uh, down in the near future?
To, to be, you know, I think I'm speaking out of school. Um, we're working on that now. Derek and I are working on that as a, uh, at, in the current climate, and this goes throughout our industry as developers and builders, um, raw ground or unfinished ground, unfinished lots, partially finished lots are not something that, uh, the large builders are buying, uh, um, in, in bulk. They're looking for companies like the folks that I work for, uh, to complete them first. Um, so we are hashing that out. Uh, I think, given the time of year, the focus has been on, let's get 'em in there and get 'em started, and I'll get Phase One finished as far as the, the southern, uh, kind of uninhabited portion that, you know, where the street hasn't, the final lift hasn't been put on the street.
Sure.
And in theory, if that effect works out, can start on the underground issues and other issues over the winter for Phase Two.
You talk about the variance for the, uh, or change in the architectural standards, and, uh, I just wanna state that I don't really have a problem with, uh, the garages coming out a little. I kind of like the idea, I think a little bit more depth in the homes actually makes them that much more attractive and actually takes it, gives the neighborhood an even larger blend of homes within the area. So those that had bought early and had sat there, you know, with some vacant areas, actually, if things do move forward and you go with what you're talking about. And I am, I was a contractor up from Menards for quite a few years when I was on the road, so I have seen a lot of Horton homes.
Okay.
You know, and I'm very impressed with Horton now, to be honest with you, as far as your...
Thank you.
I have no problems with developments that I have seen in the houses built by Horton.
Thank you.
So again, like I said, the architectural is no problem with me. However, a fifty percent cut in fees is very difficult for me to swallow. Because the way I feel is if we are taking and cutting those fees, and those impact fees were addressed many years ago when I was on the council, as far as the amount that is now in the old annexation agreement, doing the due diligence and the studies and everything else, what the impacts were to the community, and that's how those dollars came. How much has changed over the years, difficult to tell. But I know that, like you said, construction costs go up, well, the construction costs go up for the city, the schools, as well as manpower and everything else. So something that I'm sure we'll have to look at a lot closer, I feel, than just very blind saying half price. You know, because whatever we do here, I feel, is also going to blossom out to the rest of the community as far as what we're going to charge to other developers. I mean, how do you charge one developer, give them an edge versus the others? You have to be fair on all grounds. So again, that one, I'd like to hear a lot more comments. But again, impact fees are impact fees, and I know we have a scale of how we're going to recapture some of that with property values, our property taxes from these new homes. But then again, they are impacting their property taxes, or they're to pay for the impacts that they cause when they come into the community as well. So I don't take that too seriously as far as that those, that property tax makes up for those impacts. That's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Head it up.
Paul McCarry?
Just a couple of questions. You made reference to the HOA. I guess the question is, who holds the HOA right now? I don't, is it actually the residents?
No, the developer is the declarant at the moment.
So when we talk about an HOA, just so we're all clear, when we talk about the HOA, that's you?
Right.
Okay, all right. But you have a meeting with residents, you notified all of them, they, it sounds like there's fifty-four homes, sounds like at least half of them showed up, is that...
Yeah, as a percentage, I mean, there is a professional management company that ran, runs the actual operation, associate management that actually builds and collects and whatnot. The developer is the declarant, so in charge of the, of the CCNRs, the covenants, conditions, restrictions.
So currently, the HOA, and that's usually the case.
Yeah, correct.
Eighty, whatever, there's usually...
Seventy, eighty, whatever.
...members in the...
This particular ones, right?
So, so those fees are actually set by you guys right now, so, you know, the level of fees, there was some reference to the homeowners being concerned about them, so...
I will say, I took those questions last week from the residents, and my comment to them at that time was, as part of this process, in addition to scrubbing the remaining improvements and getting that teed up, I need to go through the homeowners association documentation, budgets, what have you, scrub those as well. My anticipation is, is by the time, because D.R. Horton will need to know that that has all been, for want of a better term.
Do you know, so this is, we're talking right now phase one, I guess. So how many homes total is in phase, were there fifty-four built right now? And how many, I'm talking another eighty, another eighty or something?
Yeah, so there are fifty-four existing homes, the unit one and one A, and there's eighty-six lots. There are two lots that are technically part of one A, but...
So there's a hundred and forty total?
Correct. So there's, there's two lots that we are not acquiring that are part of phase one A, and there's, I want to say it's lot one forty-one, one forty-two. The reason we're not acquiring those is because the utility connections have not been run out in front of those lots, and they're not built.
So in total, it's like a hundred and fifteen homes?
Yes, sir.
Total, then that's when the HO, does the HOA, you know, does it transfer for that phase alone? Or is it, is the language for the entire subdivision?
In my initial review, I believe it's units one and two.
One and two, so now we're talking, how many?
An additional sixty-four.
Okay, so we've got two hundred and eleven homes roughly that had total. So there has to be a hundred and sixty, seventy built before the HOA transfers to the residents. Is that roughly correct?
Again, I don't want to quote the exact percentage, but yes, in theory, yes, it's a...
So I was just trying to clarify, is when the residents actually gain control of that HOA?
That's correct.
It wouldn't be until that point. Okay. Just a question on the, so we were, it sounded like that the, it's been such a long time that the residents really aren't just in the community center, and of course, we, Alderman Glad mentioned we've got another one that, you know, we got rid of, and so I can, I certainly don't doubt that, but so we're in a build of the park, but now you talked about some changes to that, that the residents, at least the ones that were at the meeting, right? And asked for more open area and possibly even eliminating the parking lot, which I guess, I think we want our park structure in on that one, because we've got a problem in another area of the city where we have troubles with parking around parks, and so that could be an issue. But I know you, I'm just pointing out, you'll get into those details later. But then there was a comment about splash pad and, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we, you know, D.R. Horton is a luxury of seeing a lot of these community parks, right? And we build a lot of them, we build a lot in communities such as this. And there's a couple of different amenities that we see that are well-received by homeowners.
Right.
One of them that's been popular lately have been splash pads, right? It's a great place to take the kids during the summer, right? They can cool off, you can take the grandkids. There, the residents were not interested in it, and at the end of the day, it's...
Do you have any interest in that or just, or no interest?
I did not hear a single, we had, the head count that we had for the attendance at the meeting, just because I know it came up a couple times, we had forty-four people at that meeting was our head count. I didn't hear a single person speak out in favor of it. But I think there was some concerns, I think one of the primary concerns, in addition to operating costs, was non-resident use of that splash pad, and what sort of liability that may raise for the HOA for people wandering into the community.
All right, thank you.
Want to add on, that commentary also came up about the parking lot itself in asking those questions back and forth. If it's too much parking, does it invite too much outside use, since it is a private park owned by the homeowners association? One thought I had in that instance, and when I'd gotten that question elsewhere, done things instead of a full-blown off-street parking lot, to put a few parallel parking spots in, you know, if for whatever reason a parent wants to drive the kids over. So you could, you could land it in some fashion.
Sounds like a happy medium, I think, in order to...
We said we'd figure that out with staff. I think, well, to be clear, what's here tonight is, the annexation agreement says, build a community center slash clubhouse. Strike that, put it back with us and staff to figure out how to best blend that to meet the needs of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul McCarry?
Just looking at the variances that are in front of us tonight, not for what we're going to vote on, the one thing I wanted to ask was, the homes with the extended or projected garages, I don't personally have a problem with that either, nor does anybody I talk to. The one issue that came up though, and maybe Ross, you can answer this, is with those extensions, they would still have a full-length car be able to fit in the driveway, because we have several subdivisions where that's not the case, where cars are over the sidewalks, for example, timber trails, things like that. With these drive, with these projected garages, will the driveway have the space for...
Right, so you're still required to meet the setback in an RS2 district, which that is, which is a thirty-foot setback. So basically, from the public sidewalk to the front of that garage, they would have to maintain a minimum of thirty feet. So thirty feet will give you roughly two cars in front of the garage before the sidewalk.
Okay, that's all I had right now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman Kindon?
Initially, I, when we initially approved this annexation, I really was in favor of the community center. But because of times that have changed, I have no problem, and I certainly understand the fees that would be then transferred on over to the residents and want to minimize that for them. So I have no problem having it be a park. I had the same question, I wanted to make sure that there was not the intent that it would be turned over to the city. While I think it's great that we have a lot of community parks that the city owns currently, the maintenance is really a heavy burden on us, so I would rather avoid that. So as long as that's staying, that's your intention to maintain that, that's great. I have always had a little bit of a concern though of parking, while I think the drawing that was shown was quite significant in the amount of parking for that park. I would certainly want to encourage some parking, because that development's, I mean, it's a big enough development that if there was a younger mom wanting, you know, just the distance, might want to, you know, drive over there and be able to safely park, and we have had issues in other parts of the city. So I would recommend having a few at least parking spots. I don't think it has to be a significant number, but again, it's a community park, but having that there, I think, is important. The projection of the garage, I don't have any concern about. The impact fees, of course, of course, going to be a concern. I know that's something that we're going to be talking about in community development committee as well. But I would have been more comfortable if it was thirty percent. I mean, I certainly understand what, that you need to make a profit as well. But as Alderman Glad said, there is an impact to the community, and that needs to be absorbed. I understand your intention is still paying part of that, but we have to consider that as well. And, but that said, I'd love to see this development come to completion. It's been hanging out there a very long time. So I believe that it's always good to try to work together to find solutions. I would want to be very clear though, Alderman Glad pointed this out, that, you know, if we do this for you, there's the expectation that it's for everyone, that we have to address this on a case-by-case basis, and then as a staff review, those fees in general and the impact that it's having on the community in general. So open to hear what everyone else has to say, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any more comments, questions? Paul McCarry?
You mentioned that, you know, if, if you get approval, you would be purchasing the eighty-nine lots effectively immediately in regards to that one, the area one, the first phase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tough question, but I mean, it's your business. For eighty-nine homes, I mean, you're looking at, what type of timetable are you looking at in regards to fulfilling?
Right, well, it's always hard to say, because, you know, we are definitely a slave to the market, right? And so we would be modeling a home owner here, and we would immediately build between ten to fifteen inventory homes. So what we have found, let me take a step back for a second. Our biggest competitor in the Chicago land market are not other homeowners. Our biggest competitor in the Chicago market is resale homes. So as a home-building community, we build around seven thousand new homes a year. There's a hundred and twenty-two thousand resales that occur in the Chicago market every year. So one of the things that's important for us is that we are, we have move-in-ready homes for people. So as they may be evaluating two existing homes, they can come to our community and see a home that is ready for them to move in almost immediately. It's a reoccurring theme we hear in our sales offices. My wife and I decided to list our home, we didn't expect anyone to make an offer, we got three full-price offers, we got to be out in forty-five days, where do we go? For me to have four or five homes ready for them that they can move into in forty-five days is really important. So in terms of your questionable pace of how quickly we can move through this, we're projecting somewhere between two to three years, and we'd have these eighty-six lots built out, is our projection right now.
And how quickly would you actually, or how many, how many permits would you be requesting immediately?
Right.
In terms of building foundations?
Sure, so some of this depends on the time of year and how many foundations we think we can get into the ground before we start to get into frost conditions and concrete add-on charges and all sorts of situations. But we, I could certainly see us pulling between ten to twenty permits almost immediately, probably closer to twenty than ten. So the conversations that we've had internally in terms of how these starts, we would like to get in the ground this fall, was a model in fifteen production homes, inventory homes. But if we get too late in the season, we may have to tail that number back a little bit.
And, you know, understanding from your statement, I, and one of the homeowners expressed it to you at the meeting in regards to, you know, what kind of guarantee, you know, are you going to be around to complete this? And let me finish with the statement with a quick question, probably towards staff. What, what do we then hold? Is this, is this a letter of credit, or what do we hold in regards to, you know, this build-out and when it gets completed?
So we still have bonds through Avanti Group for units...
Do they transfer them to, or how does that work?
Well, to be clear, we're not going anywhere. Avanti posted bonds, they're the developer, they're delivering finished lots to D.R. Horton. So as far as the improvement issues, for example, the asphalt that Ross mentioned, the park, unit two, that's us, that's why they got me to finish that up. As far as the home-building side, since D.R. Horton is, you know, let Derek speak to that, but they'll be purchasing finished lots from us.
Okay.
All right, so let, just, you know, there's a few things that need to be done out there, obviously, still. Unit one is on maintenance right now. When Avanti took over the properties, we went to maintenance on unit one. Unit one A has some public improvements still left that need to be done. We do have a current bond in place for that. And then there's also variable road improvements that need to be done as they move into phase two, which is obviously the planted but undeveloped lots right now. And, you know, the developer's aware that those, that those improvements on variable road have to be done, but we also have a bond in place for those improvements. So at any time, you know, if, say, a developer were to walk, as with Legend Lake subdivision years ago, we have the ability, and the funding there, in order to complete those projects.
And for that matter, since we met this summer, kind of right there, forgot unit two.
Right.
There's a bond there too as well.
Yeah, we actually have a bond in place for unit two, which is just a field right now.
Is that with the same people, Avanti?
Yes, it's all with Avanti.
And, and I guess, and the final thing I have right now, kind of looking through my notes, and it's, it's been mentioned it is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room in regards to fifty percent. And it's very, very hard to, to look at that number and accept it in regards to what is done by city services and what our people have to do, and, you know, the overall cost of bringing people into, into the area and, you know, wearing chair on, out on streets, and, and, you know, other aspects of being in the city. So, you know, that's, definitely like to see exactly what is discussed after tonight in regards to that number, and I'll just, I'll leave it at that for right now.
Thank you.
Alderman Kindon? Alderman, kind of?
Just for clarification, with Director Polarecki, obviously you've looked at the impact fees, what they would actually entail, and we have the charts in front of us this evening. Are you comfortable for this project alone with a 50% reduction? I know, I'm putting, I am really putting you on the spot, but...
I'll be honest, I'll answer that question. I mean, I am, because here's how I look at it right now. Nobody's getting any of that money right now, because we have no residential development in the city. You know, I believe that doing what we can to draw some of these builders back into our community and striking one iron stock, there's a lot happening in the city right now. We've got a lot of commercial development, our downtown is thriving, we need people to come into this community and utilize those things that's happening. And, you know, I know for a fact of the conversations that I've had with D.R. Horton and other builders, that it's very difficult. They all tell me the same thing, you know, but Richmond, Spring Grove, the county, they're all doing the same thing right now. You know, if we don't do something with these, we're going to lose, we're going to lose these builders, they're going to go to other communities, and we're going to still sit with empty lots.
And that's why, thank you, I know I really put you on the spot, but you are the one that does have the most expertise on what other communities have driven and actually the impact that it's going to entail or encroach upon our community. And I think one of the most important things for me in consideration of this is the fact that we've had this property sitting there for so long, and here we finally have a developer that's interested in coming in. Now, I'm not going to commit to saying, okay, from here on out, for everyone, we're going to reduce impact fees 50%, but I would like to spark some engagement now and some development, and especially for the homeowners, the residents that are living there now. I know I've heard from several over a decade, you know, just about getting that development to completion, and we have an opportunity. So, again, I really would love it if you said, oh, we can make it work at 30%. Just throw that out there again. You didn't bite on it last time, but I'm going to throw it out there again. But I also am open for consideration, because I think it's paramount that we get that development completed.
I guess, the thing I'll just say, is housing drives economy more than anything else.
Thank you.
Good job, Doug.
Drop the mic.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I just want to call everybody's attention to page 15 of the annexation agreement to E Distribution. I don't know if everybody read that in detail. We basically are, as a city, collect our impact fees, and it was determined many years ago by the city councils as far as charging these impact fees for each individual taxing body. Now, that is something that the City of McHenry has done for many years. I know other communities had much less or no impact fees years back. Matter of fact, is our lag fee still in place? As far as the first year, if we're paid upfront?
Yes.
But what I'm getting at more than anything else is if you also take a look at the distribution, the city is basically, the city council determines everything as far as what goes on with those impact fees, because they are considered a donation, even though they are impact fees. And what we do with them is our prerogative. Doesn't matter whether it's District 15, 156, if it's the libraries or whatever. But we have impact fees for the parks, we have impact fees for water and sewer. And I'll be honest with you, I don't want to take a dime off of water and sewer considering we've just had three large increases for the expansion of our wastewater treatment facilities. My feeling, more than anything else, is, and I know, I think staff needs to really look at these fees a little bit closer as far as, because whatever we do here, you know we're going to wind up doing it for other builders. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. We really need to analyze this. I think, to some extent, what I would like to see is if we come up with any kind of recommendation tonight or whenever, as far as what kind of a percentage that we're willing to reduce, if we are willing to reduce, we don't just blanketly knock off 20%, 30%, 15%, I like that better, off of everything. I think we need to analyze who we're hurting the most and who we're hurting the least by reducing these. And maybe that's something that's discussed, and I'm sorry, Alderman Curry, but maybe we dump it in your finance committee's lab to analyze that and bring it back to council as far as where those percentage, in other words, we didn't, rather than just take whatever percentage off of each one of them, we need to look at where the least impact to our community is, and I think that's what's important, if we are going to do any reductions at all. But again, if you read that distribution, again, it says nothing herein is intended to create third-party beneficiary rights in School District 15, 156, Library District, Fire Protection District. And portions of these fees as determined exclusively by the city may be distributed or may not, you know. And, no, we don't want to be heavy to one or the other, but I really feel if we're going to do due diligence to our residents, and we are going to decide to take a percentage off, we need to figure what that percentage is going to be, and then we need to figure out where we make the adjustments to get to that percentage, rather than just strike it off of each one.
Alderman Curry, since my name was brought up, I mean, I have no problem, we can certainly look at it, I think there's probably a couple of different committees that probably are involved in this, but we can certainly look at it on the finance committee as well. But I would tend to echo some of the comments that Aiden just made, which is, we should look at, I mean, I would be interested, you know, and I don't, at this point, where the original numbers came from, you know, how were they arrived at? And, you know, I know where they are now versus then, which is basically is a CPIU, you know, addition every year since, it says 2006, so that's how they increased, but it was CPIU, so it should be tracking with what general cost increases are across the board. So I'd want to know why they are where they are, and again, presumably that's because that's the impact. So how did we arrive at that? And, you know, what reason would we have to reduce it? Because then we're absorbing the cost. So, and again, we can absorb cost, you know, if we want to encourage things, we've done things like that before, with, you know, we've done things like sales tax rebates and things like that, but I certainly want to know where it's at and what we're looking at, because I would tend to agree that some of the things like water and sewer, for example, we've got actual costs going on there, there are actual impacts. So we would need to look carefully at that. And then I would also want to know, since it's been brought up, that, you know, a comment was made by Director Polarecki that, you know, we could lose the battle against southern municipalities, builders or whatever, we ought to look at what those other fees are. Are we higher, are we lower? And, you know, so instead of just saying we need to lower it, we need to compare where we're at to determine whether that's really a case or not, so. So I mean, almost, and I know, I didn't know we were going to get into a big fee discussion tonight, because it really wasn't on the agenda that indicated we're going to table and talk about later, but those would be all questions that I would have, you know, associated with it, and I don't expect to be answered to that.
No, and that's just leading into what the recommendation from staff was, you know, I've had this conversation with a couple of the council members over the last few days or week at least, since this topic came up, is, you know, we had already started doing some research and having discussions staff-wise, knowing what other municipalities were doing in terms of impact fees, and I started gathering information to that point, Alderman Curry, about, you know, what is Woodstock doing, or Spring Grove, or Richmond, and why, and how, and where we fall compared to them. How are the original fees, you know, derived not only for this development, but for other developments in town? Because if you look at the annexation agreements for all the outstanding subdivisions that we have, for example, Legend Lakes and this one, and you compare other ones, they're all different, they're all over the board, and they came from someplace. But determining, identifying for council why, so they're not standard, that's why it's listed as special developer donation fee schedule, because they were negotiated as part of an original annexation agreement, and I'm sure Michael's been a part of a ton of those, I've only been a part of a few in my previous position. But, that being said, that's kind of why we left it where we had it with the recommendation that this is a lot, we were going to bring it to council anyway, or through committee or wherever for some sort of fee discussion generally, when D.R. Horton stepped forward with this project, and wanted to be responsive to them and at least bring the project forward to council for consideration. But as you can see, our recommendation was, you know, give us some time, staff-wise, to put the, you know, put more thought into and more research into where we're at, not only with D.R. Horton, but how this may impact other similar annexation agreements that we have in town, and what we would do then with just lots, because there's vacant lots in town that you know, as soon as you start doing this, that an individual builder is going to want to buy a lot and ask for an impact fee reduction of our standard fees. So what do we do with our standard fees? So our goal was to conduct that research, find that information, and come back to council with some sort of a, at least the information on where we stand compared to other communities, and why, where these numbers came from, and some recommendation for what we could do on a case-by-case basis across, not across the board, but on a case-by-case basis. So that's why the recommendation to table it till September 10th is the one I have planned.
Yeah, just, in asterix, you show that this amount is currently being waived by the County Council for...
Right, so for four years they have voted, the board has voted to waive their impact fees 100%.
Okay, have you taken and collected that?
Have I done what?
Are we collecting that?
No, we're not collecting it.
Why? Why wouldn't we collect it?
Because they waived it?
They don't have the right, it's all done by the city council. Please read that, that annexation.
I'm aware what it says.
Okay. If they elect not to, then the city council deems what to do with the money, whether we keep it and, you know, I mean, it's money to the community, and maybe we decide to distribute it a different way. But I think, rather than just waive it, they think we should be giving that money. And again, shut up, there's going to be a lot of discussion, so maybe it'll be muted as far as collecting it or not, but I would like to see, and I guess we got away with, away from it many years ago because of the fact of the economy, but, and we weren't really collecting much, but, you know, we used to, once a year, where the council actually voted and the, releasing the impact fees, and we used to actually have every entity come up and get their check here at the city council. I'd like to see that come back maybe once a year, maybe at the annual meeting, or maybe just before or after or something. I think if nothing else, it shows a community working together, you know, and the city also working to help out all the entities that we possibly can. So, that's all I got.
I have a couple of questions, if I could, just, yeah, these are some, I hate to put you guys on the spot, but I'll ask the questions, just since we've had the discussions and there are topics that we've had outside of the information that was provided to council since the information was provided. So my first question is, you know, you mentioned the two-to-three-year estimated build-out period. If we, if the council were to look at a reduction and put a time limit on the reduction, a one-year, an 18-month, some sort of time reduction to see what that impact would be, what would you feel about that, instead of just a cartwatch 50%?
I think it's worth conversation. What I would hate to see happen is that we hit a brick wall, you know, 18 months out, and we may be going along just fine, but then if we go back to whatever the impact fee, full impact fee freight, that they may just, you know, because what we see in a lot of communities when we do this, and, you know, our goal is to sell these homes for the most amount of money that we can get, right? I mean, that's what we do. But it's very clear in a lot of municipalities, you'll increase prices and you hit a wall. And all of a sudden, your traffic stops, your sales stop, and you see a very clear demarcation of what the market is willing to accept in terms of pricing or not. And when, if we put a wall, or if we put a trigger point, let's say it's 18 months, all right, my fear is that what happens when we get to that 18-month point? We may be back here having this conversation, again, and maybe that's warranted, right? But what I would hate to see is this thing stall, right? Perhaps, you know, this is for you all to make decisions, so I'm not trying to give advice, and please don't take this as me giving advice, maybe one of the things to consider is, you know, whether or not there's a prepay function.
Well, that's my next question that I was going to bring up, is, this is going the opposite end of the scale, is if you were willing to pay impact fees upfront, if there was a reduction?
Possibly, you know, I mean, we've got to feed that into our financial models as well, and I know that you've got some financial models here, maybe they want to run our models for us, but, you know, we have to bake that in. I mean, you know, just like every business, ROI-driven, right? We're return on investment driven, and that's, you know, so we'd have to take a look at how they would calculate. But it's, Derek, I think it's worth conversation.
Okay, thank you, thanks for letting me have some time.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I just want to bring up, you know, the ministry, Derek took and came up with some good points over there, and I think having a scale maybe on the entire development for the first three to five years, whatever we decide on as far as time frame, I shouldn't say three to five, I should say one to five or whatever, that if X amount of homes are sold, you know, that we review it every year, adjust it accordingly, and maybe in negotiations with staff, we come up with a proposal on the percentages of decrease of the impacts by the number of houses being sold or whatever. So that, when they hit so many houses, let's say the first year, then that impact fee goes back up a little, maybe not all the way, but a percentage, you know, back up accordingly. And maybe that's where you look at it too, and maybe it'll be, I say maybe, it'll be palatable for the total council and the taxing entities, and even though they don't have a say, they do have an impact on it, whatever we do decide to do, so.
Alderman, kind of?
I just wanted to share with everyone, so no offense to Alderman Curry, and maybe it does need to go through the finance committee too, but it's always been part of the Community Development Committee to address the impact fees, and we do actually have a meeting set for August 29th at 7:00 or 7:30, to address, after, and that had been scheduled, knowing that this discussion was going to happen tonight, so that we can address the impact fees, and staff has been doing exactly what you have suggested, and Alderman Glab suggested, in doing research in some of the other communities, and how those fees are driven, and how, what the impact that it's going to have. So that meeting has already been established, and we will be addressing that.
Yes, my only reservations is the fact that to be competitive with the other communities, I mean, again, when we reduce these, that we all keep in mind the fact that impact fees, especially circum- especially certain ones that impact directly just to the residents of the city of McHenry, could wind up in impacts later on in property taxes or whatever. Needless to say, we've been all very sensitive to that over the last six or seven years. Here, unless we started with the flat tax. And you just need to keep that in mind, so that's all I've told. It doesn't matter to me which committee looks at it, as long as a committee looks at it and really analyzes it, comes back with a great recommendation to us.
Thank you very much for coming out. And at this time, ask for a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Alderman, come in.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Alderman Devine. Kirk, please call the roll.
Alderman, come in.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Glav.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda, I'm asking for a motion to table this item to September ten, as it will go to committee and come back to you on September ten. Alderman Glav.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Alderman Devine. Kirk, please call the roll.
Alderman Glav.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Camden.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Just, just as a final comment, we have provided this information to the, to the other taxing bodies also. Just, we didn't want to blindside them any more than we wanted to blindside the council. So, at least let them know that D.R. Horton would be before council and provided them with the similar analysis that council got for this.
At this time, the next agenda item is public comment. Carl Hartig. If you can come onto the podium and state your name for public art, please.
Good evening. My name's Carl Hartig. Lived in Whiting Creek for thirty-two years. Mr. Mayor. Council people. And especially Mr. Hobson. What were you thinking when you okayed the referendum for another rec center? One hundred percent of every homeowner in the city would be on the hook for approximately an additional hundred and eighty dollars a year on their tax bill, which they're already overburdened with. Outrageous. Just, and, and you know what the kicker is on, on all this? Every one of you. Every single one of you already gets to use the new rec center that was just built a couple of years ago for free. I can't, my neighbors can't. You want to build another one, Bill? You want your name on that building that bad? Okay, I'll tell you what, D.R. Horton, Meyer Materials, they're all looking for breaks, make them pay for it. Mr. Mayor, you've got people in the private sector. You did it for the movie theater. Round them up, make them pay for it. Bill, that survey you sent out, I saw it. Friend of mine gave it to me. Of course, it never got sent in because I threw it in the garbage. It was geared toward one hundred percent, let's get another rec center up there. Oh, you know, when only ten percent of the population, less than ten percent of the residents of this city are using the rec center, and you want a hundred percent of us to pay for it, a new one? What are you thinking? Where did this come from? It's like, wow, everybody's got money? No, I'm on a fixed income. I'm a retired senior citizen. Where am I going to come up with my fixed income? A hundred and eighty dollars more a year? Use that sometime, Bill.
Hey, Mr. Hartig.
Okay.
You're, you're here to talk to council.
Anyway, I'm, okay. To the city council members, to Mr. Mayor, please remove this referendum from the ballot while you still have time, which you do. And I know you have time. August isn't over, you have time to get rid of this referendum. I beg you.
It's too late.
To get to, no, it is not. Alderman, come in? No, it is not too late, I already checked. So, remember, when reelection time is up, if you let this go through, the voters may just say, sorry, you're out of office. And, thank you for your time. Sorry, I got a little carried away, but I just can't afford a hundred and eighty dollars more a year. Thank you very much for your time.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Alderman, come in.
I just wanted to say that I want to be perfectly clear that I, I have inserted by the fact that things were addressed to Mr. Hobson. It is the city council that voted to approve that. And at the, we, we get our information from the direction of our department heads. And I, I, I'm very sorry that you were confronted like that. It was us that voted and I hope the community understands that. And I, I, I'm just, I, I'm sorry. I will apologize to you because you should never have been addressed like that.
Moving on to the next, the same item on the agenda, public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment at this time? I see none. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, seven A through seven D. Alderman Glav.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Santi. I'll second the motion. Discussion on these items. Alderman Glav.
Just the fact that this is the first time in a long time, I can remember, nobody pulled one.
Such a huge agenda.
Yes, yeah, four items. Thank you. Alderman Schaefer.
I just have a correction on page eight, page one forty-two of our, the name correction for the person that spoke is not correct on there from the audience that spoke. I think it's listed as Zaggoner. Then I will shout it out next.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion comments? Kirk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Glav.
All right, just one quick question, and that's the fact that we're voting with that change, right? Okay, then yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Camden.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is individual action items, which there isn't on this evening. Discussion items is next, and then the next item is staff reports. Does anyone have staff reports this evening?
No, I, I ask thank you to the Rotary Club for a wonderful event over the weekend. The Blues and Barbecue really, again, was an excellent representation of our community coming together in a nice, a nice three-day event that worked well and was more received by and by our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor, city council comments? I have none this evening. City council, you have any comments? Alderman Schaefer?
Can we just get a brief update on the Pearl Lincoln project? Yes, that's why Troy's here. That's why Troy's here. That's why I saw you, I didn't get you while you were here. So all the underground construction west of the bridge on Pearl Street section is all done. We've got about a weekend and a half left on the sanitary sewer services, and those will be done. We've been coordinating with the school district because running those sanitary service, service, service dubs across Lincoln Road is, is another challenge. We do need some full closures, so we've been keeping it open at one lane in the morning, reserving the full closures for the afternoons, which the school district was agreeable, or as agreeable to, as you can expect. And we're starting concrete construction, curb, sidewalks, west portion on Pearl. And once that's done, we'll move into HMA resurfacing or Meline resurfacing and the bridge closure and bridge deck patching will probably happen at the very end of the project, basically, month of September.
So that is, for, since school started today, we have two pretty big schools there. That, they are open to buses, both morning and afternoon?
It's, it's open to one lane in the morning. Buses, we've got it marked, marked closed through traffic in the, all day really, and in the afternoon, we do allow them to do full closures. But buses have been finding ways to, to get around. But it's, unfortunately, with the nature of those sanitary stubs, there are full closures that just have to happen in, in the afternoons.
Thank you.
We can have it in the paint, should be open.
Thank you, Troy. Alderman Glav.
Yeah, I just want to comment, the other day I was heading north out of my subdivision and I had to detour to get to one-twenty because we were closing up Meadow and tearing it apart, or actually putting it back together. And I just want to comment the great job that the guys did out there. And it's amazing that five, six years ago, we used to do a little bit of hole patches here and there. And it seems like we've gotten a little bit better as far as, and more experienced as far as doing much larger projects. You know, I brought it up, and maybe Public Works quite want to bring it up for discussion again, that years back, I brought up how Carpenter'sville actually had their own crew doing that and did a lot, a lot of streets and just thought I'd throw that out for conversation again, but accolades to your guys because they really did do, they've been doing some great jobs with bigger projects.
I'll relay the message, I'm sure you'll appreciate it.
Any other council comments? Moving on to the next item on the agenda is executive session. When we make the motion to go into executive session, I'd ask that all of you please leave the chambers and then we will invite you back in after executive session. At this time, looking for a motion to enter executive session?
For probable and imminent litigation.
Yes. Thank you. Alderman Mahavik. Second. Alderman Schaefer.
Second.
Kirk, please call the roll.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman Glav.
Yes.
Alderman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Camden.
Yes.
Then we get a roll call.
To come in to open session.
Alderman, Alderman Camden, here. Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Glav.
Here.
Alderman Santi.
Here.
Thank you.
And then simply a voice vote for a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion adjourned? It seems unanimous, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, David.
Wait, you trying to run my meetings here? David Rawls had.
Yeah, really?
Who is this guy? You bring this guy?